Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sago ani buju wachea kuekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call to order. Mr Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Thank you. So we have nothing under Committee, the whole closed meeting, so we will move right to the approval of the add-ins. We have an additional delegation. We have a couple of additional reports, including another item from Planning Committee and from the Nominations Advisory Committee. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. Please vote. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Camden.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Camden, of the Council of Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number Three, as I am a licensed realtor.
Councillor George.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause One, Report Number Three, as my company prepared the condominium plans for the applicant.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I, Councillor Richard Allen, of the Council of Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause Three, Report Number Four. As I am employed by a film and video production company, it may be perceived that I have a conflict on this matter.
Seeing no other declarations, we will move on. We don't have any presentations this evening, but we do have three delegations. So first I'll invite Grant Goodwin, Director of Innovate Kingston, who will appear as a delegation and speak to Clause Three of Report Number Two, received from the CAO with respect to Innovate Kingston, the Breakout Event. And just a reminder to all our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you. I believe we're going to show a video first.
For 48 hours in May 2017, Canada's most innovative team will converge on Kingston, Ontario. Here, they will be driving one of our nation's historic landmarks and give them one monumental charge, pioneering a project that will make the world a better place. These teams will bring their passion and skills and have their own creative resources, technology, and manpower at their disposal. If they want me to help, they will need you, the designers, dreamers, achievers, connectors, influencers, investors, and makers, who have the power to change. With thousands of people at arms' reach and millions online, each team will showcase their talent, sourcing and organizing massive supporters to move their own charity project with a standing start to demonstrate its impact in just two days and nights. This is the Breakout Project. Our talent, our energy, our excitement will change the world.
It happened in San Francisco, California, and it's happening right here in Kingston. The Breakout Project is our time and place to focus the innovation world's attention, to put us on the map and in every calendar and contact list moving forward. It is Kingston's opportunity to become a radiant beacon of social innovation for technology companies, investors, employers, employees, students, and the media. The Breakout Project is a wholly innovative event format. It is a talent showcase, a social collaboration event, and online platform, a new way for innovators to present their best selves while mobilizing masses of people to improve the planet. For Kingston, this movement allows us to look outward, to use our city's innate DNA, its historic and natural beauty, its strategic location, its world-class smarts, and its people's energy to lead the world. Innovate Kingston has a singular mission: to build a $100 million revenue business by 2021 in our city. We operate against six core values. Number one: we don't think big, we think epic. Two: we don't naysay, we bring joy to everyone we meet and everything we do. Three: we work as one. We collaborate, we share, we listen, we communicate, both within the city and with the outside world. Four: we preach the word of Kingston. We take great effort to ensure that everyone knows about the amazing things that are happening in our great city. Five: we do whatever it takes to achieve our goals. We are relentless. Six: we pay it forward. All of us are working for a greater future and not looking for our share. The Breakout Project embodies all of the Innovate Kingston values and will promote the Kingston brand to the world so we can attract and retain the talent needed to fuel high-growth businesses. The Breakout Project is a movement. Once successful, this format and platform will be licensed to organizations across Canada and the world so they can run their own breakout projects. Kingston will always be home to this movement and its largest annual event, but our brand, and that of Kingston, will be spread throughout the globe as a leader in social innovation. We hope to attract 3,000 to 5,000 people to the event in the first year, and we can expect hundreds of thousands to attend online. We hope that many of these people are the talented Kingston expats who have fond memories of their time here and who will consider returning to our smart and livable city. We are so proud of the support of our partners: Ontario 150, the City of Kingston, St. Lawrence Parks Commission, Kingston Accommodation Partners, Kingston Economic Development, Tourism Kingston, and Queen's University.
Thirty seconds.
And we look forward to forging more partnerships across our city, our province, Canada, and beyond. On behalf of Innovate Kingston, I thank you deeply for your contribution to our organization with the provision of the Portsmouth Town Hall, which has already helped fuse our startup community and support numerous high-potential companies. And I thank you for considering the support of this innovative and ambitious event. Kingston is where history and innovation thrive. We believe it, and soon so will the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Council? Councillor Allen.
Thank you. Could you just describe for us what a participant might experience at the Breakout Event so we could have a sense of what the event, what's going to take place at the event?
Sure. There are a number of participant types. So there would be a team participant, so these would be up to 30 teams we're inviting here, teams of 10. There'll be some local companies, there'll be some companies from Canada's north and across Ontario and Canada and beyond as well. So they're going to be involved in the team format. I can expand on that if you like. Attendees are the people who are coming to the event. These are talented people. When they register, will know what their skills are and what their passions are. They will be able to watch and expand their learnings and rub elbows with some pretty impressive, inspiring people, but they can actually donate time at the event and over the next 365 days, and they can donate money. A portion of every ticket will be given back to them in sort of an online wallet, if you can imagine that, and they can donate that to the projects as well.
Just as a follow-up, I don't mind, I'd like to hear about what the teams will be doing. That'd be great.
Perfect. So the format really is about talent showcasing, and for those of you who are familiar with or have been involved in innovative businesses, they have a lot of things they have to do very well and very quickly. The teams that we're attracting here will need to showcase those skills in a very short period of time, both by creating the right project that has the right resonance, shaping that vision, getting the communication out as quickly as possible. In each room, so kind of the, it's in Fort Henry, so in each little headquarters, you know, their Breakout Project Kingston headquarters, they'll have a lot of communication technology at their disposal. And so what they'll be able to do is to use that technology, their own skills, their own tech, their own experiences, their own skill sets, to forge a project that will be communicated and live broadcast from their room. Okay? And what they're trying to do in this 48 hours is move the project forward as far as they can in order to attract attention and attract belief. But the real event, the contest element of this, is about raising capital, both human and financial. So to do that, they will have the attendees, but they'll have the online stream as well. And throughout the entire event, there'll be a main stage, and if anyone here, it's sort of like a rowdy TV format, or if you've watched the meme online Between Two Ferns, have you seen that, right? So it'll be constant interviewing of the project leaders from business celebrities and other, you know, rather luminary types, who are talking to the projects in panel format and one-to-one to raise awareness, as money and hours are being contributed with a live leaderboard the entire time. So they're innovating, they're working on what they do as engineers, makers, designers, but they're also communicating, attracting, setting values and vision the entire time. So it's instant, sort of, think of it as a kickstart to a 365-day project. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Councillor Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. For the public at large, how will they be engaged? Will they actually come to the fort?
Let's hope they do, yeah.
Okay, so that's part of it, that we will buy an event pass, the public will come watch, maybe donate.
That's right.
Look at the big screen, there'll be other events happening.
Yeah, so if it's kind of happening around town, we're hoping it's sort of a festival feel in many ways, and some of our partners are helping with that, so they can buy tickets to come to the event. They're very affordable right now for a short while, so anyone in town who's listening, get on it. But they can also attend online for free, as anyone can. And then we are planning a concert downtown to end the event, so they can take part in that. That will be a free public concert that we hope will have some size and some fun and some attraction to it as well.
So just to follow up, it sounds like you're encouraging businesses or cultural spots downtown or in Kingston to have events as well as this whole thing's going on?
You're darn right, yeah. We really want, it's a city showcase, we're bringing some pretty amazing people here with the intention that they're going to see a city that they might not have realized was here. So we're going to have to all be ready to show our best selves. We know we can do it frequently, and we're going to have to bring it all together at one moment. That's what we're hoping will happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. You mentioned that this type of similar event happened in Austin, Texas?
No, sorry, no, I didn't mean that.
Oh.
I meant that the movement happened and it went from a city that really wasn't an innovation center to being the center of a universe. If you're familiar with the South by Southwest Festival, that transformed that city from what was kind of a government/university town into something that is very much not that today. So it's a movement there that happened that really changed what the word "Austin" means to the world, and that's what I was referencing.
Okay, do you know any other cities where this has been done?
This is a world first.
Oh, okay. Well, best luck then.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next delegation this evening is Christopher West, Financial Advisor for Three Max, who will appear as a delegation and speak to Clause Number Two, Report Number Two, received from the CAO with respect to the Marine Museum of the Great Lakes, Alexander Henry Options Update, and Temporary Property Taxes. Mr. West.
Mayor Patterson, councillors, and for anyone in doubt, despite my introduction, I'm still the Chair of the Marine Museum. When I last appeared before you at the end of June on behalf of the Marine Museum, you responded with intelligence and generosity that enabled the museum to preserve its collections and continue to operate sustainably. You also provided an important financial contribution that made it possible to extract the Alexander Henry from the Kingston dry dock and tow it to the ship's current secure mooring site in Prince Edward County. For these gestures, we are very grateful. As you know, your resolution in June had certain terms and conditions that were predicated on what we knew at that time. The two options for the ship were either scrapping it at a contractually agreed upon cost of $326,000, or preferably converting it into an artificial diving reef at a cost then unknown. Since then, after several months of due diligence, the museum board has come to the unhappy conclusion that the cost to reef the Alexander Henry upwards of $400,000 and possibly much higher cannot be justified. This is particularly so when there's no guarantee that, having spent the money, the requisite final government permissions for sinking the ship would be forthcoming. To the museum's surprise, however, this past August, a third option arose that promises much less risk and cost, and potentially a very happy ending for the Alexander Henry and all parties concerned. I am referring to the Thunder Bay option that is outlined in the report before you this evening. From our standpoint at the museum, it's hard not to wax poetic about this proposal. The Lakehead Transportation Museum Society is a very genuine and credible group. We have been in extensive correspondence and phone call meetings with them since August, and I can assure you, their desire and commitment to bring the Alexander Henry back to its home port and the city where it was originally built is beyond any doubt. The total cost to tow the Henry back home comes in at about $250,000. As referenced in your report, LTMS, the museum group in Thunder Bay, has already laid the groundwork for raising much of it. Kingston's backing of the Thunder Bay option and accompanying it with a meaningful financial contribution can only help galvanize Thunder Bay's own city council and ensure the third option's success. What's the benefit to Kingston? As things stand now, council soon will be contemplating a $163,000 expenditure towards the scrapping of the Henry. By backing the Thunder Bay option with a maximum contribution of $50,000, that cost to the Kingston taxpayer could be reduced by more than two-thirds. There are also social and historical dimensions. Scrapping the Alexander Henry would be an ignominious end for a vessel that for decades was a tourism icon on Kingston's waterfront. As the home of the Museum of the Great Lakes at Kingston, we have an opportunity to preserve an historic ship at a sister Great Lakes port, where she will be maintained and cherished for decades to come. This is entirely fitting. Lastly, there's a property tax matter on the agenda. From the time the Marine Museum property sold last January until our eviction last August, the museum is responsible for the taxes assessed on the property. As you can well imagine, there has never been an allowance for taxes in the museum's operating budget, nor is there now.
Thirty seconds.
The impending liability of $40,700 is far beyond our modest means. Even allowing for a charitable rebate, we are left with a tax hit that is unsustainable. I hope you will see fit to provide appropriate relief on an extraordinary one-time basis, as proposed in the report before you. To sum up, both with regard to the Henry and to the tax matter, we appeal once again to this council's wisdom and creativity in turning problems into solutions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Council? Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, is the City of Thunder Bay, has their council endorsed the proposal, and are they putting forward municipal, a municipal donation as well as you're asking the City of Kingston to do?
Good question, Councillor Neil. We have worked through our museum counterparty in Thunder Bay. They have been working closely with their city administration from the mayor on down. They met yesterday and apprised the mayor and officials of exactly what's happening this evening. There's a bit of a domino effect here. We were asked some time ago to provide a guarantee that we would transfer the ship to Thunder Bay, and we said, wait a minute, we're obligated by a resolution that was passed in June at the Kingston City Council to go in a different direction. We'll have to come before this council to seek new direction and explore a third option. So that's why we're here, and provided that we can get a happy outcome this evening, the domino tumbles right over to City Council in Thunder Bay, and they're waiting for that.
Thank you. I, as you know, have always supported the museum. I would hope, as I'm sure you do, that Thunder Bay also is able to financially support the plan as well.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our third delegation this evening is Darren Dalgleish, General Manager and CEO of the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, who will appear before council to speak to Clause Five, Report Number Two, received by the CAO with respect to the partnerships between the City of Kingston Correctional Service Canada and the St. Lawrence Parks Commission Tours at Kingston Penitentiary, 2016 to 2017.
Thank you, Your Worship, Council. Who wants to get locked up again? We had a tremendous season. We saw remarkable spin-off benefits of local businesses. In fact, our GTA attendance to Kingston Penitentiary tours exceeded that of the local attendance. This is what tourism is all about. It's about bringing dollars from outside communities to our communities. In fact, over 70% of the attendance out of the 60,000 attendees at Kingston Penitentiary do not live or reside within a 45-minute radius. So I understand you have a council report before you this evening encouraging you, or at least asking you to consider an additional year of this partnership, which I think has been expressed by every local business, at least that I've been made aware of, as a highly successful enterprise, to say the least. St. Lawrence Parks Commission frankly relishes the idea of doing this a second year in a row. Our original proposal was for multiple years. Understanding that there is a visioning process taking place right now, we would be very, very pleased to have a successful second year. In spirit, Correctional Service Canada has agreed to allowing us to access the site from May until October, which actually constitutes more than double the volume of days, because we would not have the interruption in September from an equestery event, and we would be starting about two months prior to what we, the date we started this year, which suits very, very well our training program, our student recruitment programs, and so forth. All in all, we believe that tripling the volume of Kingston Penitentiary tours will have a commensurate effect on the community, on the economic spin-off, as well as the allocated funds to United Way and Destination Marketing efforts, which this year included things such as the tragically hip concert and highlighting Kingston as a tourism destination. So as you're aware, $322,000 was provided to United Way, an equal amount was created Destination Marketing resources. We expect that a commensurate amount to the volume increase at Kingston Penitentiary, which is three to four times, would be provided to both those two recipients, United Way and Destination Marketing. And I think it's also important to mention that because this was done so well and this relationship works so well with the three arms of government, that CSC has seen fit to allow us to access a broader area of Kingston Penitentiary, which would allow us to provide more premium experiences, where visitors could spend the entire day or almost a day touring areas that would have otherwise not been accessible to the public, like hospital, like regional treatment center, like gymnasium, and other areas of the penitentiary. We barely touched 20% of the footprint when we went through last time. And lastly, I'll just finish with my expressed appreciation on behalf of the St. Lawrence Parks Commission for the City of Kingston being willing to participate in this tremendous endeavor, and presumably and hopefully you will support this again for a second year.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thanks for the presentation. I read the numbers with interest of the provenance of the tourists based on the online sales and was, as you say, noticed that it was obviously bringing a lot of money into the area with only 17% of the tickets being sold to Kingston residents. But the one, the other thing that stands out, I mean, it's great total numbers and obvious success, but the other, when you look at the difference in the, where everyone's coming from, international 21 sets of tickets and in the United States, 59 sets of tickets, by far the two smallest groups. And I'm wondering what the Parks Commission has in mind to market things internationally in, with, you know, the higher level of ambition for this year.
So I've never had a product in front of me that required so little marketing. In fact, I don't think we spent a dollar specific to Kingston Penitentiary, other than the branding efforts we made. This was all based on media pickup, including upstate New York. So considering that we had almost one ticket for every 10 buyers, I'm not sure there's a need necessarily to go target additional markets, but I would suggest that the resources that come from the penitentiary tours are very strategically placed and utilized by Tourism Kingston and partners with the St. Lawrence Parks team to attract more of a legacy destination effort, something that goes beyond Kingston Penitentiary, because I think we'd all agree, we're not sure what that will look like down the road. And the last thing I would say is that these data are reasonably good, but we don't know from a visitor's perspective how many families are buying tickets for their families and friends to visit and attend Kingston Penitentiary. We only record postal codes for the buyer of the package.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you for the information tonight. It was very informative. I have a question for you. You mentioned there would be different types of tours possibly coming up this year. Could you expand on that? Like, would you have a separate tour for a full day or half day? Or how would that work?
Yeah, so I think what the bulk of the tours would be similar to last year. In other words, the key areas of the prison, hour-and-a-half-walking tour, this should allow us to go between 700 and 1,000 visitors a day. In anticipation for these additional areas that have been provided, we would create a more intimate, premium tour that would be, you'd be paired up with somebody very informed and perhaps a retired individual from, that worked in the prison, and actually have a great deal of time exploring the other areas of the prison. And unfortunately, I'm not in a position to share those today, not because there's anything confidential, simply that we haven't gone through with any public safety engineering firms to determine what's safe and reasonable to provide a good value to the customer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Neil.
Just one very quick question, thank you. I know that Fort Henry is a great boom to... I know that Fort Henry is a great boom to the community and also in summer employment for a lot of Kingstonians, a lot of students that choose to stay in Kingston as a result. What do you anticipate the numbers of May through October employees might be with the penitentiary tours?
We're estimating 50 students. Last year, we were about 38, and frankly, as many CSC retirees that are willing to spend their spring, summer, and fall with us, because that added a dimension that we really cherished. So I would suggest it'll be a minimum of 50 students from, you know, an inventory of students that participated last year and new hires, and we plan to utilize the Fort Henry resource footprint again. So there'll be students employed at Fort Henry as a consequence of Kingston Penitentiary tours as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Again, incredibly exciting news for Portsmouth. The question, the final statement on the visioning says it's understood the tours would be discontinued should the property be disposed of prior to the end of October 2017, which is pretty scary. I'm wondering about, because the visioning is happening and the way the tours and the allocation of funds is set up, is part of the discussion, we hope long-range, how the prison actually can be maintained as well as having the tours?
You know, from our perspective, the St. Lawrence Parks Commission is, our time horizon is October. We want to do it very well, and we'll provide those data and the information to the city council to be considered along with everything else you're considering for the long-term plans of the penitentiary. And if that includes us, wonderful. If not, we will have done our part.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have no further delegations this evening, but we do have one briefing. Lynn Carloto, general manager of the Rogers K-Rock Center, will provide a briefing to council with respect to clause four, report number two received from the CAO with respect to the Rogers K-Rock Center 2017 annual plan.
Mayor Patterson, members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity to update you on our results for our 2016 operations to date, and also to take a look forward into 2017 and beyond. When we look back on the beginning of this year, we had a very strong winter, thanks to the Kingston Fratnax and our very exciting opportunity where the Fratns brought home the Eastern Division Championship for the first time in franchise history. It really got things going in the building. We had a tremendous amount of hockey enthusiasm, and we were very pleased to see our team do so well, of course. That led us into, later in the spring, where we, again, were the recipient of the Canadian Music and Broadcast Industry Award for major venue of 8,000 capacity, which was really quite an accomplishment for us. As you see, it's the fifth consecutive win, and we've won the event seven out of eight years. Again, this is an award that is open to every venue of our size throughout the nation. So it's quite an honor for us, and we're very proud of it. As we got later into the season, at the end of the summer, prior to the start of hockey, we finished our renovations to the 400 level, to our premium level. Very different look, new color scheme, new carpeting, total refresh of the area. It's something that we feel very strongly about, and I know you do as well, in keeping our facility up-to-date, modern, in handling our customers in the most impeccable way possible. We had some interesting data points that we were tracking throughout the year. Our website now has reached to the point where Montreal is our second highest traffic count outside of Kingston. Frankly, before Ottawa and Toronto, we find that to be pretty interesting, so our reach continues to expand. We also see that 67% of our website traffic is coming off of a Google search on the name of the building. So certainly mobile's where it's at, and internet-based inquiries are really where we're seeing tons of growth, and no surprise there. We also have seen an online shift in purchasing. It doesn't seem all that long ago that you could first buy tickets online, which was such a novelty. Now, half of those people are now buying their tickets on their phone. We can't talk about 2016 without talking about August 20th, which was certainly the most significant day for all of us. There really hasn't been, nor can I imagine there will ever be, a more important event to take place citywide. We were more than honored to welcome the Tragically Hip home, not only to Kingston, but to our venue. There was an unparalleled amount of preparation that went into that event, not only working with the band and production and management and the tour, but also with broadcast, documentary, Prime Minister's Office, and tons of local security and preparations that we wouldn't ordinarily do for other events. We were steadfast in our commitment to providing an experience for the band that would be impeccable, which is the word that we were using, and also something that made all of us very, very proud to do. The media coverage, as we all know, was incredible. It was the story that was covered in the entertainment industry literally all over the world. We know that 11.7 million viewers tuned in to watch. There is a social media joke that the other 23 million were at their house, which I really wouldn't be surprised, I don't know of anyone that really wasn't aware or watching the broadcast. There's certainly never been a prouder moment for our venue, and I think knowing how successful Springer Market Square and all of the other smaller celebrations were throughout the city, I believe that it's a sentiment we all share. We had another opportunity this summer, early in the summer, to roll out a new festival concept with downtown Kingston. Pop-Up Country was unveiled with the May 13 Jason Aldean concert. It's modeled closely to the Blues Fest, where downtown Kingston BIA members become part of it, they're marketed, they have, they program country elements that evening, so that when our concert lets out, we can continue to capture those fans and keep them in the city. And the objective, of course, being to turn it into another overnight and get them to stay and to come downtown again the next day. Following the Pop-Up Country debut, there was an economic impact study commissioned. We know that we had $90,000 in direct impact generated by those who came to enjoy, and when you roll in the festival costs themselves, that number soars to $115,000. Now, 47% of those attendees traveled more than 40 kilometers to arrive. So we see, again, tourism is a strong, strong initiative for not only the work that we do within the building, but in terms of reaching out and collaborating with our partners in the city. We're always looking to keep our food and beverage offerings on trend and interesting for our fans. This is the year that we introduced combination meals, gourmet hot dogs, hot, 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 hot dog, mac and cheese hot dog, some very interesting taste combinations, chef-carved prime rib, cheese melt sandwiches, house-made cookies, and also a custom Caesar bar for folks who want to try some different tastes, as well as a non-alcoholic version of it. So we have a lot of fun with these initiatives, and we feel very strongly about keeping all of our concessions and premium offerings current and new for our fans. Let's take a look at event data. I know that it's easy to believe that the more events you have, the more people you will have coming into the building. We see that that's not the case. If you take a look at what we're projecting as our total number of events for 2016, we have 108. Yet, look at our attendance this year. It soars to nearly 254,000 people. Now, when you really drill down on that, it's a matter of having smaller events, but in many cases, larger events, greater impact. So we've welcomed many more people into the venue this year with fewer events, an interesting But 2016's not over yet. We still have quite a number of events taking place in addition to the Kingston Fratnax. Tomorrow begins our run of Cirque du Soleil OVO. This performance has been so successful in advanced sales that we added another performance to our run. We will also be hosting World Juniors, The Road to World Juniors Hockey in December. Jerry D. When we roll into 2017, we'll be welcoming Jeff Dunham in January, Blue Rodeo in February, and April, we'll see the Harlem Globetrotters, and also Dean Brody. And there's more events to come. I know I always say that, but it is really true, and there is going to be another one announced next week. And yet, one further thing to start thinking about, February 23rd, 2018, K-Rock Center is going to be 10 years old. If we can really get our heads around that and realize that we have so much to celebrate, that's what we are all going to be working on in terms of creating branding, promotions, and programming to put the spotlight on our venue, and also to create an atmosphere of celebration around this most important date. So while the details of what this plan will be are yet to be determined, stay tuned, because we will certainly be doing a lot of work to make sure that there's a great celebration around this anniversary. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you all of our information, and we look forward to 2017 and continuing to welcome Kingston and all the fans from the region into our venue. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing, oh, Richard Allen, Councilor Allen?
Thank you for adding councillor to that, Mayor Patterson. So I just have two questions, they're kind of related. One is, do you think that the metrics in your first slide about visiting, traffic on the websites, was that influenced at all by the Tragically Hip event? Like, were you able to account for that in terms of the total traffic? Because I would assume that, considering the worldwide impact, that might influence where those hits were coming from and when.
We found that the searches for Tragically Hip tickets were from everywhere. So I'm unable to pinpoint Montreal or Quebec simply to one event. I do know that the overall search for tickets has broadened, and I'm sure the Tragically Hip contributes to it, but I can't say that it was simply because of one event.
Great, thank you. And then, speaking about tickets and purchasing tickets through phones and that, there's competition out there for tickets that isn't necessarily human in terms of their purchasing. What are we doing or what trends can we see to protect our tourists, to make sure that they get tickets, to protect our local concert-goers, to make sure that they're able to get tickets to some of our shows? I understand that certainly the Hip event was a unique event, but there's certainly, we'll see that trend affect other events as well.
Clearly an issue in our industry. In the old days, when everybody was standing in line at the box office, there was never going to be a concern about the hands that the tickets would end up in. As technology and digital platforms get into the mix, the ability to control to the extent that you would like to becomes less and less within your control. I know that Ticketmaster, our ticketing provider, is working diligently to identify ways to combat the bots and keep tickets in the primary channel so that they get to individual ticket buyers. I know that Ticketmaster spends an enormous sum of money on research and development, and I know that the ticketing industry at large is very concerned about this problem. On a local level, we work with our events to sell tickets locally at our box office whenever we can, and look to our suppliers, such as Ticketmaster, to make sure that they're coming up with methods to stop what has been occurring in the industry.
Councilor Kendon?
Thank you, and through you. I'm guessing the lower the Canadian dollar is, the higher your stress level is. How did you guys overcome that challenge? Because I think that at the start of the year, you would take a wild guess that that would be a very big challenge, and it seems like you guys managed that quite well. Was there a strategy in place, or was there luck involved, or a combination of both?
You know, we're always lobbying, because we know if tickets are going to sell for that artist anywhere, we're very confident that we're going to be able to sell them here in Kingston. We also rely on the entertainment industry to be nimble and recognize that while that balance of currency isn't going to be exactly as they want it to be, these artists that are putting out new music and wanting to tour, they're not going to stay home. So it requires us to make a compelling case for them to come to Kingston. If they're out, come here. We ended up finding ourselves more tied to the tours that were out and the opportunities for individual shows than we were the loss of shows because of the dollar. It also has something to do with the shows themselves being well-suited to our size venue. So in the spirit of there's many factors, it turns out that in spite of the trouble with the currency and the concern that we had about it, there were other mitigating factors that lessened the impact on us.
Councilor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. So two questions. First, just both related to the 2017 marketing priorities. I guess broadly, the first question is, how do these priorities fit in with our tourism strategy? And secondly, there's reference to Queens and encouraging or developing that market, and apart from sort of online social media-type activities, there's not a whole lot in the report that identifies what the strategy for targeting Queens and St. Lawrence College, or let's say, that demographic, would look like. So if you could just maybe speak to some of the acts potentially that you would have in mind, and how that fits in, this whole entire strategy fits in with our broader tourism strategy, would be great.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Tourism, first of all. We do work very closely with Tourism Kingston CAP and the Downtown BIA to co-promote all of our events and keep each other up to date, as well as the Grand and other city activities as well. So we all kind of are in a coordinated step to put our best foot forward and to co-brand and co-market wherever we can. As far as students are concerned, we do go onto campus and set up opportunities to sell tickets directly and to do some direct marketing. We also know that students really are tied to social. Everything that we do online is certainly going to have an impact on the student market if our messaging... if our messaging is constructed properly. I had an opportunity very recently to talk to a couple of Queen students and ask them, "How is it that we can get you to come to the building and spend more time?" And the answer was, "Get Maroon 5." So, you know, it does seem at times that it's very product-driven. With the right event, the students will find out about it. Because those events can't be instantly materialized, it's really more a matter of getting into the community, getting on campus, and working to establish some of those relationships so that we have more open channels.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to petitions. We do have a petition bearing approximately 18 signatures received by Councilor Allen and received in the Clerks Department on November 18th, 2016, and reads as follows. "We, the residents of Sidnum Road north of Highway 401 and south of Berbrook Road, petition the city to lower the speed limit of the 1.2 kilometer stretch of road currently set at 80 kilometers per hour to 60 kilometers per hour. We understand a recent traffic study recommended the speed reduction and we are fully in support of this recommendation. This area of Sidnum Road can be considered a built-up area and therefore, a reduced speed limit does apply. The amount of traffic on Sidnum Road has increased and when combined with the current speed of 80 kilometers per hour, it creates safety issues for motorists and pedestrians using this stretch of road. We request the speed limit be lowered from 80 kilometers an hour to 60 kilometers an hour along this portion of Sidnum Road for reasons of public safety." Okay, are there any other petitions to present? Councilor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. A week ago, I had a town hall and there was a petition available that had also circulated in the neighborhood, which I'm presenting tonight. It reads, "Vote to change the City of Kingston bylaws to protect the central Kingston's family neighborhoods. We, the undersigned or concerned citizens, who urge our leaders to act now to amend the city's plan and bylaws that easily allow single-family homes to be turned into multi-unit rental properties, leading to excessive noise, garbage, and neighborhood destruction. We will lose the charm and character that attracted us to these community neighborhoods in the heart of our historic city." And not coincidentally, it bears 192 names, approximately how many were at the town hall.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Cannon.
Thank you, through you. I had a, on the addits, I had another conflict of interest that I had forgotten to mention. I haven't filled out. If I could declare that now?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. "I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my perceived pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number Six, as I am a licensed realtor. My apologies."
Okay, thank you. Any other petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have one motion of condolence, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson. "The city council expresses our sincere condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of Karen Fraser, who passed away recently. Karen worked as a senior planner with the City of Kingston for over 10 years and she was a valued and dedicated employee who will be greatly missed by her coworkers. Our thoughts are with her family and friends during this difficult time." We will call the vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions this evening, so I will ask for Report Number One from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Cannon, that Report Number One from the Chief Administrative Officer can be received and adopted.
So, there are clauses A through F. Would anyone like anything separated? Counselor McLaren?
Alpha Bravo.
Sorry, which one was that?
A, B.
A and B?
Yes, please.
So, A and B. Counselor Allen?
C, please.
Okay, so, first, we will vote on the balance of the items. So, Clause D is Community Investment Fund 2016 Recommendations. Clause E, Amendment to License Agreement with Community Response to Neighborhood Concerns. And Clause F, Appointment of Chief Building Official. And that carries. Clause A, Award of Contract Elevator Inspection and Maintenance Services for Specified City Locations. Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. And this is, I first of all, thank staff for actually answering the questions through email, but this is sort of a follow-up question and I will preface it with a bit of the context of the original question. In the report, it gave, it didn't give the exact matrix in by which you can continue or can, you look at the criteria and divide it by the actual cost or the price that we would pay for each of these four applicants. And it strikes me that the criteria for pricing that they have, that we do, which is relative, where we compare the relative prices of each and then assign a score to them, doesn't take into consideration the possibility that of the cost per benefit. And it strikes me, the cost per benefit is more important for the public good than the relative cost of each one of these things. Now, in this particular case, thanks to your numbers that you gave me, it turns out that it is in fact the same. But if we were to do this, in my opinion, a slightly different way by taking the objective criteria determined by staff and then divided that by the dollars, we get a ratio that better reflects the benefits to the city and to the corporation. So, my question is, am I, could I ask that in future, all these reports demonstrate that matrix? I understand that it's already done through engineering and I appreciate that because it's easy to do. Could we do that world, citywide with regards to procurements like this?
Okay. CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have not had an opportunity to discuss the proposal that the councillor has brought forward this evening. I understand he's spoken to some staff with respect to the specifics of that particular award that's before council. So, I'd be pleased to have that conversation with him and understand the methodology and then determine whether or not that would be an acceptable approach to take with some of the contract awards.
So, I think what we'll do is we'll make sure we can find comments, questions to the particular item. What you're raising is more of a policy issue, that certainly can be explored moving forward. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions? So, we'll call the vote on Item A. And that carries. Item B, Award of Contract Certified Forestry Technical Services, oh, Technician Services, rather. Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. And this is also a similar question. I understand from the email that I sent ahead of time that there were 11 companies that requested the information for this request for proposal, yet only one actually filed their papers. And I'm wondering if, are we aware of any reason why so many were not interested in submitting their papers for this particular request for proposal?
Mr. Wells?
Through you, Your Worship. The RFP was requesting proposals for a certified forestry technician to undertake assisting us with implementing the coming year's Emerald Ashmore program. And it's a fairly...
Mr. Wells, can you just speak a little bit more into my just...
Sorry. And it's a very technical task. It involves a lot of different operations that the technician has to monitor. There's also a significant time commitment to following through on all those different operations throughout the year because we do different operations at different times. So, I'm not sure if perhaps some of the smaller firms that took the RFP out weren't able either to make that commitment or if they had staff with the experience that we were actually looking for.
Okay, thank you. So, we will call the vote on Clause B. And that carries. Clause C, Smart City Intelligent Community Progress Report. Counselor Allen?
Through you, Your Worship. Thank you to staff. My thanks to staff for bringing this forward and sharing some of the work that we can look forward to and some of the work that's been done so far on this. My questions are mostly around the Wi-Fi strategy on page 11, where it says that the goal is to provide free public Wi-Fi at all city-owned facilities, city-managed public spaces, with priority given to facilities that serve the public in places where there's relatively high pedestrian traffic. What I would like to request or ask of staff is if consideration could be given to areas where access to internet or private internet may be more difficult for that neighborhood or that constituency. So, later on in the report, it discusses how new builds like our Rita Heights Community Centre and our Kingston East Community Centre are going to have this infrastructure built in. And I would say that that's essential in Rita Heights. There have been some other municipalities that elude me right now that have focused their Wi-Fi strategies in places where access for that community may be more difficult to the internet to provide young people and those neighborhoods with access to something that they can't afford in their private residences for various reasons. And so, I'd like to ask if we could include these kinds of neighborhoods that we've identified as maybe not having as much access to private internet as part of our rollout. Is that possible?
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is and we appreciate the feedback. It is a bit of a balancing act because there is the private sector internet Wi-Fi access in a number of different locations as well as some of the public access as well. And so, we have, we've tried to be reasonable in terms of managing with the locations for which the city has the facilities available to be able to establish that. With respect to Rita Heights Community Centre, at the present time, we're trying to determine the span or the scope of the service and the capacity that that service would create in that particular area. But it is an ongoing analysis and we respect that that is a service that we need to continue to move ahead with as part of council's priorities.
Thank you. And just to follow up, if I may, we, Counselor Bowman and I sit on the Rural Advisory Committee and we tend to have those meetings in the rural area, in meeting rooms in the fire stations and that. And we've been, with the city's engagement strategy, we've actually had the zoning bylaws and the meetings and the official plan consultations come out to the rural area and it's really great. Except for the fact that generally, staff have a hard time getting connected to the internet and even if they get wired onto the internet in those places or make use, try to make use of PowerPoint presentation technology in those places, it doesn't work very well. And so, it's very difficult for those rural communities to then want to use our facilities out there when we don't have the basics to hold a meeting and for the city to hold a meeting. I hate to imagine if we tried to start streaming rural advisory committee meetings from out in Joyceville Fire Station. So, I'm hoping that as part of our smart city strategy, we remember that our city has a rural area that needs, and actually, rural broadband is an issue across the nation. It's one of the big issues that I've been dealing with my colleagues at FCM. But if we can find ways to make sure that we're looking at rural internet access as part of our economic development and smart city initiatives, it would be fantastic to ensure that those communities are, hamlets, neighborhoods, and community centers are included as part of this. So, I'd like to make sure that we're, where we're holding meetings, we have the resources to actually achieve the functions of those meetings. It would be great.
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll provide a comment on that. I think maybe we can also work on this in the short term with respect to the locations to make sure that we do have access for that purpose. But in addition, we are working with the Eastern Ontario Regional Broadband Group, the EORN Group, that has brought broadband to all of Eastern Ontario, particularly the rural part of Eastern Ontario. And they've been partners for a number of years now. So, we continue to partner with them as we can. The utilities Kingston Fiber is not at some of the locations and it would be economically difficult for us to actually invest in that fiber backbone in those areas. But certainly, working with our partners, including the use of satellite, is something that we will continue to explore.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just following on that line of reasoning, do we have a projection about how many years it will be before we have Wi-Fi in all of our major city venues? I don't even know if they have to be major, but I'm assuming that we're following some kind of strategy, well, first of all, let's get them into the facilities we've got and then we might think about filling in the gaps, but that's like years out, it seems to me. So, do we have a projection of, at this rate of investment, how long it's going to take us to cover the important parts of the city facilities?
CAO Hunt?
So, through you, I don't have the exact date, but I, it's not that many years out. We do have a strategy to be working on the facilities that we own and we'll be sure to report that back to council as part of our update a year from now in terms of the detail and perhaps the action plan associated with it. But I would say, within a year to two years, it's likely that we'll have the majority of those facilities and the Wi-Fi access available.
Just a follow-up. Then, would the plan be to work to supply Wi-Fi access or in partnership with the private sector Wi-Fi access in the future? And can we see that far ahead or is it just too big an issue at the moment?
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The idea would be to continue to partner where we could. The private sector will make investments where there's a business case and it would be difficult for us to build redundancy into those opportunities if the private sector is going to provide that. Oftentimes, the private sector uses the backbone of utilities Kingston Fiber to actually provide the network capability that links to Wi-Fi. So, it can very well be a win-win partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, just looking at some of the recommendations for the event in 2017, the Smart City Forum, the first one, I'm going to read it, sorry, it's on page 17. Awareness in the Community of What a Smart City Intelligent Community Is. So, it's expected that the event would generate some awareness of that. Sorry, this is a serious question. I guess my head's still spinning after having done the mydemocracy.ca survey recently. So, I guess what I'm curious about here is that, like, it seems as though there is a lot of value associated with the smart city outside of the city, like that there is some kind of broader, or at least I have always interpreted it as a very positive thing, that we had been moving in this direction. We also have a strategic priority that emphasizes smart livable city. So, I'm just curious about, like, the plans, I suppose, beyond this event to sort of interpret what it means to be a smart city. Like, it's clear, reading the report, that it has to do with a lot of infrastructure. But the fact that that is the number one, or not priority, but like, it is actually on the list of things that we would like to accomplish in terms of the marketing and promotion of this designation, it would be good to know what the value is and if, how that will be communicated to the community broadly. Because it seems if we're at this point where we don't really know or it's hard to communicate that, that we should have a plan to do so. have a plan to do so.
Say, Yo Hunt.
So to attempt to answer some of that question, so part of the challenge is to identify that, you know, a smart and livable city has a lot of aspects to it. It may be technology, it may also be talent, it may be the opportunity for innovation and collaboration and creating the platform for success both economically and socially in your community, and all of the things that have been part and parcel of many of the priorities of council and many of the initiatives, that some of which we've heard of tonight are all part and parcel of the advancement of the city. You'll remember in 2014, the City Wendy was in the top seven of the Intelligent Communities Forum, and that was about the use of technology, both from a community perspective as well as an organization's perspective in terms of how we conduct our business and what's available. In the budget that just recently passed by Committee of the Whole a few weeks ago, we had a significant investment approved in technology and the use of technology for service delivery as part of the way we do our business in the city. So it isn't a narrow piece of work in terms of what is a smart city, but we do know that there are elements that are threaded throughout this particular report and the Strategic Priorities Report that are all contributing to the smart and livable components as Kingston and Canada and the world embraces technology as part of the culture of society.
Thanks. Yeah, no, that's great. The technology piece is very apparent. I guess it's, I suppose, like, thinking of a smartphone in a smart city, then it's sort of the same thing, that they're advancing, that they're moving forward. I understand that concept. I guess essentially it's more to do with, like, creating the pride in the community about what that actually means, so -- but I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Neil.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I really appreciate the questions regarding Internet access and Wi-Fi and the commitment we've made for the new community hubs and future community hubs as we develop them. I've said many times before, we already have many community hubs, they're called public libraries, and those public libraries provide not just Wi-Fi access, but access to hardware. There are a lot of children and youth in, I know as a public school educator, there are a lot of children and youth whose only access to a computer would be at school or in a public library. And so it's important that as we vision how we're going to be developing community hubs, and I know we've done this to a certain extent, we also envision how we can create hardware access, because in many of our neighborhoods and communities, families don't have these tablets sitting on their desks and don't have smartphones. So whether we have Wi-Fi in that immediate neighborhood, frankly, is irrelevant. So we need to be able to provide both Wi-Fi access but also access to computers and tablets as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Turner.
Thank you. And just really quickly, I wanted to point out that the Wi-Fi strategy, I think, is awesome. But I was traveling this summer, and I was in a city where the Wi-Fi was free everywhere, and it was in a totally different country, and it was amazing. So if we were going to coin ourselves as a tourism city, it would be great if we had free Wi-Fi everywhere. So if people had their smartphones, they could find out where they are, how they're going to get somewhere by just going into their data instead of having to, you know, log in and pay for roaming charges. So it's just a thought, but I think the Wi-Fi strategy is great, and if we could just tweak it and keep going into the future, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause C. And that carries. Report number two from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Holland, but report number two from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So the first clause is Strategic Priorities Midterm Update. We'll call the vote. Oh, Counsel Neil.
Just a couple of questions, if I might. I noticed, and I want to thank you for the depth of the report. It was very helpful. And in certain areas like public transit, I think we're doing a tremendous, tremendous job. There are some areas, though, that I'd just like to ask a couple of questions as to where we're at. Under foster open government, I know that there's, other than ongoing, there's only one act, and that's under Development of Public Engagement Framework. And I went to those public meetings, and I appreciate the work that was done at the time. I'm curious about where we are with upgrades to the city website, implementation of the Open Government Kingston Work Plan, and a report, as I understand, is forthcoming, on the Public Engagement Framework. And I'm also curious, because I know there was a motion that Counselor Allen and I brought forward regarding the public process of Planning Department, and I don't believe, if I'm reading this correctly, that it has even a date for completion. And I believe the understanding at the time of the motion was that we'd be moving forward with that file. Perhaps staff could answer those questions.
Okay, so I see a couple hands. So CAO Hunt.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to answer a few of the questions with respect to the specific issue on the Planning Department, the planning file. I'm going to ask Commissioner Hurdle to respond to that. So I want to talk a little bit about open government. So open government is a strategy that was presented as part of, first of all, as a priority that was established by council, was a strategy that was presented as part of some of the work that was done initially. And open government is a very broad definition or description of creating the transparency and the opportunities to allow additional opportunities for those that want to understand in greater detail access to public information and that sort of thing. We have, as the councilor would appreciate, done some work on our website and made it much more user-friendly, but it doesn't stop there. As part of the budget, we saw a significant investment, as I spoke about a few minutes ago, in technology. And in order to create the links and the platforms so that the various data gathering repositories can talk to each other to lay out data in a way that people can come in an open manner to the access points, is not something you can do overnight. You have to rethink your systems. We're putting in the DASH system for the planning aspects, all of the various departments using that. We have the financial management system, we have the customer relationship management system. The goal is to have all those systems be able to talk to each other so that there's a way to harness the data so that we can make it available for people to move forward. You'll remember when we were on this track in 2015, after the priority was established, we indicated that it was going to be a multi-year program to be able to get to where we needed to get to, and council were supportive of that at that time. With respect to the elements of open government, as it would relate to input from the public, I will say, and it says in the report, that, you know, we've been conscious of that for a long time. We've always done business in a way that has been following, obviously, the public open houses for planning purposes, as it is under the Act, and we've been engaging the public. The challenge has been, how do we engage more of the public? How do we get more access to the public and get more feedback? And as you get more feedback, the synthesis of that information starts to paint the picture of an entire and broader community as opposed to a narrower focus of the community. And so it's not that we haven't been doing that. We have actually been doing that and offered many more different options to be able to have and receive that feedback. But I would say that we're not done. We know that we have to do more, and we know that we have to get better at it, and that's going to be part of the strategy when we bring back the Open Government Report and the Public Engagement Strategy to council early part of the new year. So I'm not saying we're done. I just want council to understand that it is an evolution, and we know we need to get better on that. So with respect to the specific planning question, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hurdle.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Before you answer that, I would like to know how the question about the specific motion is relevant to the strategic planning update, and I'd like a ruling from your worship.
So my ruling is that Counsel Neil has the floor, so he asked a question of the CAO, so the CAO has provided an answer. So now Commissioner Hurdle has the floor, she can provide an answer. Then Counsel Neil can ask follow-up questions, and then if you'd like to ask fuller questions, we can give the floor to you.
Sorry, I just thought that maybe it wasn't the time and the place for this specific question, seeing as it was to do with an actual motion and not with strategic planning.
No, my interpretation would be that it was addressing the strategic priorities, that fostering open government is one of them, but thank you. Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So quite briefly, in terms of the motion that was passed by council in terms of reviewing the process for planning applications specifically, and I do recall the conversation that took place at that meeting where there were a few questions about timeframe, and we didn't provide a timeframe at that time. We indicated that we couldn't provide a timeframe because there were so many other priorities going on, to be quite honest, and our team staff have been out in the public quite a lot in the last number of months in terms of connecting with members of the public. Having said that, the research for best practices has been completed, and we are putting together a framework in terms of how we are going to engage the public, and that will be moving forward, and we are working closely with the Clerk's Office on this because recognizing that we're talking about applications through formal committee meetings in terms of public meetings, so we are going to be moving that forward in early 2017 in terms of engaging the public.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I do totally appreciate the DASH implementation of the DASH program. It makes the myriad of information much more accessible to the public and to slow counselors like myself, so I really appreciate that. I just have a quick question regarding open data, and I know that that's in a kind of different area of the matrix as open government, but we all see that open data and open government are very, very linked. And I'm wondering how much we've been able to look at best practices of communities like Guelph that I think have advanced this in the last two or three years. Have we had an opportunity to look to how they have indeed opened up and used open data there?
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through you, your worship. So yes, we have looked at a number of best practices, and this initiative is in process right now. We actually are going to be launching just a pilot with respect to some data that already has been available to the public, but it's been more available with a strategy of pushing it out to the public as people are asking, as opposed to them being able to come and retrieve it. So it'll be a little bit of a change, but we're trying to do it with some existing data that we know already is in demand and that the public has been asking for. We're going to see how that goes. We're also in the process of doing an open data policy, and again, looking at some best practice around that, and hoping to get that brought back and approved sometime early in the new year, and then we'll start to expand from the pilot.
Great. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause One. And that carries. Clause Two, Marine Museum of the Great Lakes, Alexander Henry Options Update and Temporary Property Taxes. Counsel McLaren.
Thank you, and I apologize to the Commissioner for not getting these questions to her ahead of time. In the report, it talks about a number of parties that are contributing to this 25, or 250,000, and it mentions the Lakehead Transportation Museum and, I assume, the Marine Museum and the city. Are there any other parties?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we know that the Lakehead Transportation Museum Society is working with FedNOR and Northern Ontario Heritage Fund, so they are leveraging, obviously, looking at leveraging grant dollars through those means. I know that they're doing some work in terms of their own community as far as donations, and as indicated earlier by Mr. West, there have been discussions and conversations with the city of Tunder Bay, and it is, obviously, our expectations that should this project go ahead, that the city of Tunder Bay would be involved financially as well in this project.
And may I ask, how did it become, with four parties, how did it become deemed that we would pay 20%?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the recommendation is up to $50,000. It doesn't mean it will be $50,000. We wanted to give a little bit of room in terms of being able to make this happen should the city need to have a greater role, but not to exceed that amount. So at the end of the day, depending on the contributions and donations and potentially financial implications with the city of Tunder Bay, it could be a lot less than $50,000.
And my last question, I also have taxes that I don't like to pay, and I was wondering, what are we going to do about our precedence if we are, in fact, paying taxes for another institution?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we did have conversations in regards to taxation, but we do recognize that this particular situation is quite unique in the sense that the Marine Museum, when, obviously, they established their license agreement at the time was with the federal government, was in, had the ownership of the property, and didn't surly anticipate within their budget to have that property move into the private sector's ownership, and under their license agreement, obviously, have some requirements there with taxation. So it is also for a very limited amount of time. It's not something that's ongoing, so we recognize that it's from January to August, and again, was quite of a unique situation in terms of what the Marine Museum and not contemplated based on the ownership of the property.
Thank you. And just one last question. May I ask, what are the liabilities if we don't pass the $50,000 or the $40,700?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the $50,000, hopefully, if the city doesn't contribute anything, the city of Tunder Bay, as well as the Lakehead Transportation Museum Society, are going to be able to make it happen in terms of the $250,000. If not, then I will be reporting back to council, asking council to contribute $163,000 to scrap the ship, and that's something that council's already identified in the previous report as an option in case we are not able to find an alternative that would be financially feasible. So out of the two options, this might very well be the least costly for the city. And in terms of the taxation, well, based on our conversation with the Marine Museum, that would greatly impact their operations and their sustainability as it's a significant Museum, that would greatly impact their operations and their sustainability, as it's a significant amount that, again, they had not budgeted for based on the ownership of the property.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal?
Yes, this comes from the question that I asked the delegation earlier, and I don't want to do this in the form of an amendment to the recommendation. But I think it would be helpful if the mayor were able to, after, if this, as I assume, gets approved, if the mayor could make a phone call to the mayor of Thunder Bay, and CAO to CAO, and just say, "The city has made this financial commitment, and we're hopeful that you can do the same." If you would be comfortable in a friendly phone call?
I would be happy to make a phone call to the mayor of Thunder Bay.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hutchinson?
I would point out that counting on Thunder Bay for a lot more than 50,000, the first thing. But my second question, I'm just, when looking at how much we're paying out, it says here that we're paying HST on the property tax. And I have to wonder, isn't that a tax on a tax? I'm just wondering why we're doing that?
See you, Your Honor.
And is it legal?
That's through you, Mr. Mayor. So when the property tax bill is billed to the Marine Museum in the form of additional rents, the additional rents then attract property taxes. So that's the same way it is with any commercial lease. The property taxes are billed to the owner. The owner bills additional rents to the Marine Museum in this case. So what this recommendation is actually saying is that we need to give a grant upfront of 40,000, but we're going to get a rebate on, or the Marine Museum will get a rebate on the HST, and they'll also get a charity rebate because they're a registered charity. And at the end of the day, the net amount of money that will actually flow and cost the city will be about $24,000.
Thank you. No, I appreciated the net part of it. I just thought it was strange in a commercial lease that you're being charged a tax, HST, which you don't, the owner doesn't actually remit, because he doesn't have to.
See you, Your Honor.
So just to clarify, so the owner billing that would have to remit the HST. HST is just a, the owner just becomes an agent for the collection of the HST, and the Marine Museum would be able to recoup through rebate of the HST, similar to what goes on in a commercial business on an annual or on an everyday basis. They charge HST, they remit it to the government. If they pay HST, they get a rebate for it. So it basically is a flow-through tax that doesn't actually end up sticking until it gets to the ultimate consumer.
Thank you. Should have thought of that. The, I'd just say I welcome this, and the main reason is arithmetic. It costs us a whole lot less. You know, we're saving what, $113,000 or some number like that? So I welcome this, and I thank staff for their efforts in this, on our behalf in this case, and to the Marine Museum for hanging in there. Hopefully, it'll all come to good fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Strobe?
Thank you, your worship. I think I agree with the Chair of the Museum, Mr. West, in his assessment of this being the preferable option for the disposal of the ship. And I would just like to point out to the people of Kingston and to you here tonight, that although if we, if this is pulled off and the ship is towed to Thunder Bay back to its, to her origin, that doesn't mean that we don't get anything out of it other than getting the ship off our hands. We actually are, the story of the Alexander Henry being in Kingston for all those years is now moving to Thunder Bay. So Thunder Bay will hear the story of Kingston in that new museum. So, and the ship continues. So we are associated forever with the history of this ship, and that history will be told, that story will be told in Thunder Bay. So that is actually a plus for the city of Kingston. And because if anyone from Thunder Bay ever comes to Kingston, they may want to look into some of the aspects of that story that still exist here in Kingston. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause Two. And that carries. Clause Three, Innovate Kingston the Breakout Event. Call the vote? And that carries. Clause Four, Rogers K-Rock Center 2017 Annual Plan. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. So I guess, just building on my earlier questions regarding how the marketing strategy presented here ties, or my view does not tie in at all to our tourism plan, our broader plan, which we've had presented to council, and all of council is very much in favor of the ideas and the theme of Made Fresh Daily, Made in Kingston, all of that, targeting a younger demographic. It's, I'm not, I'm not seeing much other than hockey games and jumbo dogs, and I really cannot continue to support the work that's being presented, based on the fact that if there is a strategy for the target market here, it's not being presented, and it's certainly not tying into a broader policy. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting this plan. Thank you.
Counselor Neal?
Yes, just a quick question. I know from being on the Arts Advisory Committee and being involved with the Grand Theatre over the years, we've had an opportunity to, if we have surplus seats available, we've made them available to, if age-appropriate groups in the community in order for us to encourage the arts. And I'm not sure, and I wish I'd asked this question of the delegation before, but I will ask it in the future. I'm hopeful that they have a similar program, so that if they, I know that they're a private venue, but if they have surplus seats available, and they're able to offer them up to, you know, an appropriate high school, or if it's appropriate elementary school, in order to give children and youth an opportunity to be engaged in the arts or to experience the arts, I would hope that they're able to do that. And that's a question I dearly wish I'd asked the delegation earlier, but perhaps I can talk to her later.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause Four. Still to, Counselor Hutchinson?
There's consternation down at this end of the forschu, for a number of reasons, I think.
Okay, so, so did you want to speak? Did I not see your hand, Counselor Hutchinson? Is that what that is?
Yes, I just wondered if I was too late, but it's my colleagues that are cross-talking. I'm not complaining about it. I'm just saying. I'm not complaining about it. But that's why the vote isn't coming through, okay? So I'm just explaining why we're waiting.
Okay.
Okay? But I do have a question of my own. In the...
Okay, okay, hold on. So, Ms. can see from...
Could you explain again to me?
So, Counselor Hutchinson, we, we are in the middle of taking the vote, so if you can speak briefly or ask the question, and then we'll ask everyone to vote. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies. I'm just confused by the added versus the recommendation.
So, yeah, so this is, so what we've done, since we approved the added, just so everyone is clear, this is a vote on the amended clause as it appears in the added.
But it doesn't appear in the other as well. So the part you're stroking doesn't appear in the recommendation in the, in Report 17011. So I'm not quite sure why it's in the added. That's the confusing part.
So can we get a clarification from staff?
So the recommendation in the report is correct. It's wrong in the agenda. However, the addendum picks up where the change should look like. So what you're voting on is the motion that is outlined in the agenda, sorry, in the addendum.
Okay, I heard that. It's just, okay, it should have appeared like this, but then you realize it was wrong, and so you fixed it in the added, even though it was fine in the recommendations.
That's correct.
So is everyone clear then? So we're voting on, we're voting on the clause as it appears in the added. Okay, so the vote is open. Counselor McLaren?
Could you explain the difference in the dollar figure again? I'd missed this. So it's gone from 601 in the original to 607 in the new one. What is this extra $6,000 for, and how did that materialize? Is that just an error or typo in the original?
Is that an administrative error, or is there...? Mr. Foulle?
Through you, your worship. Yes, that's an administrative error, so it all does.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Please vote if you haven't already voted. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Counselor Holland?
Point of order. I hit the wrong button.
Okay, can we, can we call a revote, please? Okay, we're still waiting for one person to vote. Can everyone please vote? And that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Thank you. Onto Clause Number Five. In the added, partnerships between the City of Kingston Correctional Service Canada and the St. Lawrence Parks Commission Tours at Kingston Penitentiary 2016-2017. Call the vote, please. And that carries. Report Number Three from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present Report Number Three from
Moved by Counselor Schell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that Report Number Three from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. So it's just the one clause? So it's approval of the final plan of condominium, 740 Augusta Drive. Please vote. And that carries. Report Number Four from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to report. Report Number Four from the Administrative Policies Committee duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Bowles, seconded by Counselor Holland, that Report Number Four from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. We've, we're going to separate Clause Three for Counselor Allen's pecuniary interest. Would anyone like, anyone else like any other separations? Okay, so what we'll do is we'll call the vote then on Item One and Number Two together. Item One is the 2016 Interim Audit External Audit Plan, and Item Two is the Tax Writeoffs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. And that carries. Item Three, Film Policy Amendment. Counselor Neal?
Just very briefly, I really applaud this. I think we've seen some very interesting transformations over the last four or five years of, and major films being, choosing Kingston as the venue for their films. And so I look forward to, it's not a lot of money, but it's good seed funding that I think will encourage more and more filmmakers to choose Kingston, as we've all chosen Kingston. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Strobe?
Yeah, just like to echo Counselor Neal's positive endorsement for this film commission. It is, I think, I agree, it's a great idea, and it's already creating a bit of a buzz in the community. I've already had feedback, positive feedback from some filmmakers, local filmmakers. So I think it's great. Thanks.
Okay, so we will call the vote on Clause Three. And that carries. Report Number Five from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Who has Report Number Five?
My pleasure to present the Report Number Five from the Arts Recreation and Community Policy Committee for consideration by council.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Cannon, that Report Number Five from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are two clauses. Counselor Neal?
Yes, Clause One. I appreciate seeing this as an actionable item. I believe this was either the first or the last motion that was brought forward some time ago. And many people active in community gardens have been asking me what's been happening with the edible trees policy. So it's very good to see that it's, it's going to be, it's going to be done in the near future. I appreciate that.
Okay, so we will call the vote on Clause One, Community Orchard and Edible Forest And that carries. Clause Two, Municipal Park Identification Sinage. Counselor Hutchinson?
I'd just point out that perhaps for the sake of the public as much as anything else, that this would bring us, this policy and this action will bring all the parks in the city from east, central, to west, to have the same signage. This is left over from amalgamation. We're finally getting there. They're really good-looking signs. They have a really nice motif to them, and I think we'll be happy with them. We got to look at them at the committee. And so it's good to see, it's just another way in which we're...
And so it's good to see, it's just another way in which we're knitting our community together and we should be proud of that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Report Number 6 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present Report Number 6 from the Planning Committee for Council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Schell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that Report Number 6 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 1110 and 1112 Sunnyside Road. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report Number 7 from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
It's my pleasure to present Report Number 7 from the Nominations Advisory Committee for consideration by Council. And I think the mayor's aware, I need to make a motion of amendment as well after it gets picked up here. There is...
So Counsel Hutchison, I'll just, I'll just let you hold off. We'll let, we'll read it into the record and then I'll recognize you.
Sure, no problem.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor George, that Report Number 7 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Counsel Hutchison?
Thank you, Worship. There needs to be an amendment as part of a correction due to the fact that it was unclear how many members we were, we were electing to KEDCO on the night of the nominations committee meeting. This is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor George, that Clause 1/8 of Report 07 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be amended to add Jillian Waters for a term of one year, to amend the term of David Carnegie to three years, and to add Bill Dunford for a term of three years so that it reads as follows. That the following appointments be made to the Kingston Economic Development Corporation KEDCO Board of Directors. Then a series of bullets. Jillian Waters, one-year term, December 31, 2017. Peter Dalton, one-year term, December 31, 17. Trevor Wilson, one-year term, December 31, 17. Lindsay Wise, one-year term, December 31, 17. Bill Durnum, three-year term, December 31, 2019. David Carnegie, three-year term, December 31, 2019.
Okay, thank you. So I, it's more of a technical amendment? Anybody wishes to speak to it? Seeing none, we will call the vote on the motion to amend. And that carries. Are there any other motions to, to be presented? Counsel Allen?
Thank you, Your Worship. In, I'd like to ask that we separate Item 16 or XVI, which is the Tourism Kingston Board of Directors. I have a motion concerning that. Would you like to hear that at this time or after we deal with the balance?
So it's, it's probably appropriate if you, if you want to put forward a motion now with respect to that, then that would, that would amend or defer the existing motion on the floor.
Okay. So I'd like to defer this section of the recommendation. It's come to my attention that the Tourism Kingston is not yet incorporated and that process is still taking place and that the KEDCO Board of Directors will be briefed on the incorporation on Monday at their regular meeting. And that the Tourism Kingston and the Tourism Kingston Partners that were part of the transition team would like to just make sure that that incorporation has taken place and confirmed before they come back to the nominations committee with this. So they'd like to defer this back to, I'd like to defer this back to the nominations committee at the point in which Tourism Kingston is actually incorporated.
Okay. So do you have, do you have something in writing, Counsel Neal? Or, sorry, I don't know what's, Counsel Allen, sir.
I don't have anything in writing at the moment, but it can happen fairly quickly.
Okay. So just while you're putting that in writing, Counsel Holland?
Thank you, Worship. I would just like to take an opportunity to declare my conflict on the matter. I, Mayor Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report 7 as my employer, Keyes Job Center regularly partners with KEDCO.
Okay. So here's, so here's what we're going to do. Since we have to separate the EDO nominations and the, is it, Counsel Holland, is it just with respect to the KEDCO or is it with respect to Tourism Kingston as well?
Just to KEDCO here, but then as we go forward, yeah, there's others.
Okay. So just KEDCO, okay. 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 So just, just so we can manage our time effectively, what we'll do is we'll separate, we'll separate Item Subclause 8 and we'll also separate Subclause 16 because that's with respect to the motion to defer that Counsel Allen's putting forward. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read through the names for the other committees. That just gives us a couple of times to get set up here. So, so Clause 1, recommendations regarding public appointments to boards, committees, and working groups. That the following appointments be presented to the December 6, 2016 council meeting for consideration. So, Number 1, Appeals Committee, that the following appointments be made to the Appeals Committee for a term of one year expiring November 30, 2017. Nicola Dayak, Jennifer Ning, and Hillary Wallace. Number 2, the Arts Advisory Committee, that Maxim Nolet be appointed to the Arts Advisory Committee for a term of two years expiring November 30, 2018. Number 3, Canada 150 Community Leaders Network, that the following appointments be made to the Canada 150 Community Leaders Network for the term of the project. Amy Cadman, Amy Cadman, Dylan Chenier, Liam Cowan, Eric Galarno, Pavel Gray Mason, Dan Hendry, Amanda Van Halteren, Krista Mash, Megan McKeever, Merrill Morant, Ruth Nordograph, James Robert Ossler, Terry Slack. Number 4, Committee of Adjustment, that the following appointments be made to the Committee of Adjustment for the remainder of the current term of council, November 30, 2018. Julie Scanlon, Christine Cannon, Stephen Foster. Number 5, the CRCA Le Moine Point Advisory Committee, that the following appointments be made to the CRCA Le Moine Point Advisory Committee for a term of two years expiring November 30, 2018. Hilary Atkin, Bruce Pack, Ricardo Smalling. Number 6, Housing and Homeless Advisory Committee, that the following appointments be made to the Housing and Homeless Advisory Committee for a term of two years expiring on November 30, 2018. Robert Rittroge, Terry Fleming. Number 6, 7, Kingston-Frotonak Housing Corporation Board of Directors, that the following appointments be made to Kingston-Frotonak Housing Corporation Board of Directors for staggered terms of two and three years. Denise Cumming, Calum Mir. Number 9, Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum, that Lynn Zhu be appointed to the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum for the remainder of this term of council expiring November 30, 2018. Number 10, Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Board of Directors, that the following appointments be made to the Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Board of Directors for staggered terms of one and three years. Nicholas Brown, Jessica Corbile. Number 11, Kingston Penitentiary and Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Visioning Community Working Group, that Roland Billings be appointed to the Kingston Penitentiary and Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Visioning Community Working Group for a term of one year expiring November 30, 2017. Number 12, Kingston Police Services Board, that Andrea Risk be appointed to the Kingston Police Services Board for a term of two years expiring November 30, 2018. Number 13, Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, that the following appointments be made to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee for staggered terms of one and two years. Andrew Ashby, Fran Denby, Anne Lorraine Farrar, Donna Huff, Deana Jansen, Drew Kennedy, Yana Merikova, Robert McKay, Sherry Scott. Number 14, School Site Land Acquisition Community Working Group, that the following appointments be made to the School Site Land Acquisition Community Working Group for a term of one year expiring November 30, 2017 or until the project is complete. Shannon Ernst, Anna Gibson, and Enem Elhok. Number 15, Taxi Commission, that the following appointments be made to the Taxi Commission for a term of one year expiring November 30, 2017. Don Amos, Craig Drager, Rod Moffett, John Pike, and Karen Weisbaum. Number 16, oh, we're deferred Number 16, so that's the balance. So we will call... Oh, okay. So we'll also then do Number 2 and Number 3. So Number 2, affirmation of technical representatives and tenant members to committees and boards. That the following recommendations be forwarded to the December 6, 2016 council meeting for consideration, Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. That the following technical representatives be affirmed to the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee for a term expiring November 30, 2018. John McDougall from the County of Frotonak, Peter Clark, Community Leadership Committee as established by the United Way, KFLNA, David Jackson, Kingston Not-for-Profit Housing Association, Ted Smith, Homelessness Services Providers. Number 2, Kingston-Frotonak Housing Corporation Board of Directors, that the following tenant members be affirmed to the Kingston-Frotonak Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a term of one year expiring November 30, 2017. Elizabeth Defoe and Lee Galen. That the following tenant member be affirmed to the Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Board of Directors at Townhouse Kingston for a term of two years expiring November 30, 2018. Robert Trenteau. Number 3, continued recruitment for School Site Land Acquisition Working Group, that council direct staff to continue recruitment efforts for the School Site Land Acquisition Working Group in order to meet the membership requirements for the working group. And that carries. So next we will do the vote on Item 8, which is the Kingston Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. So Counsel Holland has stepped away. Can I get a copy of the revised report? I only have the original here. Okay, thank you. So that the following appointments be made to the Kingston Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, Jillian Waters, one-year term, Peter Dalton, one-year term, Trevor Wilson, one-year term, Lindsay Wise, one-year term, Bill Durnford, three-year term, and David Carnegie, three-year term. And that carries. Onto 16, Tourism Kingston Board of Directors. Counsel Allen?
Thank you. So as I mentioned, the Tourism Kingston isn't yet incorporated, so it doesn't yet have a board of directors. And so what we'd like to do is defer this back to the nominations to consider the board of directors in the incorporated Tourism Kingston session. So they'll be able to, the nominations committee will be able to speak with the members of KEDCO and the tourism community who have been building this board to make sure that the board we're creating fits the incorporated Tourism Kingston. So we're going to defer Clause 1-16 of Report Number 7 to the nominations committee after Tourism Kingston's incorporation is finalized.
Okay. So there's a motion to defer, put forward by Counsel Allen. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Turner?
I had Bohm on there, but...
Okay. Is there any discussion with respect to time or place? Counsel Stroud?
It's the wrong paragraph up there. You got that? Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
The I is on the wrong side of the V.
That's true. That's true. That's 14. Should be 16. Okay. So I think we can just note that. Thank you for the sharp eyes, Counsel Stroud. Okay. Any further discussion? We will call the vote. The motion to defer. And that carries. We have nothing from Committee of the Whole. We have no information reports, no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. We have a couple of motions. Number 1, that as requested by Canada Blood Services, council proclaimed December 2016 as Canadian Blood Services Give Holiday Campaign in the City of Kingston, moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Counsel Schell. And that carries. Number 2, whereas members of council have indicated their choices to serve on the undernoted committees for the terms shown below, and whereas there are sufficient vacancies to accommodate each councillor, therefore be resolved that the following members of council be appointed to serve on the undernoted committee board corporation. Planning Committee, Counsel Allen, Counsel McLaren, Counsel Neal, Counsel Osannick, Counsel Schell, Counsel Turner. Arts Advisory Committee, Counsel Cannon and Counsel Neal. Cataracty Region Conservation Authority, Counsel Allen, Counsel George, Counsel Osannick, Counsel Turner. Cataracty Region Conservation Authority, Le Moine Point Advisory Committee, Counsel Osannick, Counsel Turner. Court Revision Drainage Act, Counsel Allen, Counsel Bohm, Counsel George. Heritage Kingston, Counsel Schell, Counsel Stroud. Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Counsel Allen, Counsel Cannon. Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, Counsel Neal. Taxi Commission, Counsel Schell. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Oh, you want to do... Okay. So what we'll do instead is we'll, we'll move everything all at once. So what I'll do then is move into the second clause where we will have to do some voting. So whereas there are more applications from members of council than vacancies for the following committees, therefore be it resolved that council select the members of council to be appointed to serve on the following committees. So first of all, Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee. Counsel Schell?
You can remove my name, please.
So in removing Counsel Schell's name, we then have six councillors. So we have Counsel Bohm, Counsel Holland, Counsel Hutchison, Counsel McLaren, Counsel Neal, and Counsel Osannick. Appeals Committee. Counsel Holland?
Thank you, Worship. Could we...
So only one of you can remove your name. So I recognize Counsel Holland first. Okay. So what's happening? Who is removing their name? Counsel Schell?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
So that leaves us then with Counsel Holland and Counsel Hutchison. This is going very smoothly so far. Thank you. Awards Committee. Right now we have Counsel Bohm, Counsel Cannon, Counsel George, Counsel Holland, and Counsel Osannick. Counsel Holland?
Could we remove my name from this one, please?
So Counsel Holland has withdrawn. So councillor Holland has withdrawn. Councillor Bohm has withdrawn. Councillor Camden has withdrawn. Okay, so, sold. We have councillor George and councillor O'Sannick for the Awards Committee. Thank you. Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. Councillor Neil.
Councillor Shell is doing an excellent job, and councillor Holland, it's going to be very busy in her district, so I will withdraw my name.
Very good. You could get through all of these without doing a single vote. We have councillor Holland and councillor Shell then for the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. Kingston Economic Development Corporation. Councillor Allen.
Could we please withdraw my name from that?
Okay, so that leaves us with councillor George, councillor Hutchison, and councillor Turner. Councillor Holland.
I'm just in, having a conversation with the clerk. Am I removing myself for this vote as well? Yes, okay, so I'm going to do that right now if we're voting. Thank you.
We're not going to take the vote right now, but...
So what we'll do is, so at the end, we'll separate it. Okay. Kingston Police Services Board. Now we have councillor George and councillor McLaren. So we will take a vote. So everybody has one vote, so I will call the name and then I'll ask either the clerk or the deputy clerk to count the votes. First of all, councillor George. Please look behind you as well.
There's a vote of seven.
Councillor McLaren?
There's a vote of six.
Okay, so councillor George is appointed to the Kingston Police Services Board. Nominations Advisory Committee. Right now we have councillor Allen, councillor Bohm, councillor Camden, councillor Holland, councillor Hutchison, councillor McLaren, councillor Neil, councillor Shell, and councillor Stroud. Councillor Shell?
Can you remove my name, please?
Okay. Okay, so we will take a vote. Again, everybody has up to six votes. So first, councillor Allen.
We have a vote of nine.
Councillor Bohm?
We have a vote of eight.
Councillor Camden?
We have a vote of nine.
Councillor Holland?
This is a vote of twelve.
Councillor Hutchison?
This is a vote of ten.
Councillor McLaren?
We have a vote of six.
Councillor Neil?
We have a vote of five.
Councillor Stroud?
We have a vote of thirteen.
So we'll go to the next round. So councillor Stroud is in, and the councillor who defuses votes, councillor Neil, is out. So now everybody has five votes.
Okay, so everyone now has up to five votes. So councillor Allen?
We have a vote of ten.
Councillor Bohm?
We have a vote of eight.
Councillor Camden?
We have a vote of nine.
Councillor Holland?
We have a vote of thirteen.
Councillor Hutchison?
We have a vote of nine.
Councillor McLaren?
We have a vote of six.
So in this particular vote, councillor Holland is in and councillor McLaren is out. Up to four votes.
So I have six. So we've eliminated, so councillor Shell withdrew and we've eliminated two. So I have then councillor Allen, councillor Bohm, councillor Camden, councillor Holland, councillor Hutchison, and councillor Stroud. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Sustainable Kingston Corporation. We have councillor Allen, councillor McLaren, and councillor Neil. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I'll withdraw my name.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody has one vote. Councillor Allen?
This is a vote of nine.
Councillor McLaren?
This is four.
Okay, so councillor Allen is appointed to the Sustainable Kingston Corporation. Tourism Kingston. So there are, councillor Holland?
Thank you, I'd like to withdraw my name, please.
Okay. Councillor Stroud?
I'm at six total committees, so I'm withdrawing my name too.
Okay, so we have four names for two positions. We have councillor Camden, councillor Neil, councillor Shell, and councillor Turner. Councillor Camden?
We have a vote of seven.
Councillor Neil?
We have a vote of five.
Councillor Shell?
We have a vote of eight.
Councillor Turner?
We have a vote of three.
No, that can't be right. Sorry, so everybody has up to two votes? So can everyone raise their hands again for councillor Turner?
My apologies, it's four.
So in this one here, councillor Shell is appointed and councillor Turner is dropped. So everybody now has one vote again.
Okay, so this is one vote for either councillor Camden or councillor Neil. Councillor Camden?
We have a vote of seven.
Councillor Neil?
And we have a vote of six.
Okay, so we have councillor Shell and councillor Camden for Tourism Kingston. Okay. Whereas there are fewer applications from members of council than vacancies for the following committees, therefore be it resolved that council select the members of council to be appointed to serve on the following committees. So for the Administrative Policies Committee, currently we have councillor Allen, councillor Bohm, councillor Camden, councillor O'Sannick, and councillor Stroud. So we need one further name. Can I have a volunteer, please? Councillor Shell, thank you. Okay, next for the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation's Policies Committee. Currently we have councillor Camden, councillor Holland, councillor Hutchison, and councillor Stroud. Need two additional names, please. Councillor Neil and councillor Shell. Thank you. The Court of Revision Municipal Act. We need three councillors. Right now we have councillor Bohm and councillor George. Can I have one more volunteer, please? I don't believe the workload on this committee is enormous. Councillor Holland, thank you. Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation. We need three councillors. Currently we have councillor Camden and councillor Shell. Can I have a volunteer, please? Right now, the only people making eye contact with me are councillor Camden and councillor Shell. Can I have a volunteer, please? Okay, we will, we will come back to that one. Kingston, Frontenac, Lennox, and Addington Public Health. We need three councillors. Right now we have councillor McLaren and councillor Neil. Can I have a volunteer, please? Councillor Holland, thank you. Okay, and for the Rural-Urban Liaison Advisory Committee, that's the mayor plus two councillors. Right now we have councillor Allen. Can I have someone else? Councillor Allen?
I just wanted to make a comment that it would be great to have someone that represents urban on this committee, because the other half of the committee is all rural from the county, so makes sense.
This, this committee meets once every six months for an hour. Councillor Holland, thank you. Okay, I'm going to circle back. I'm going to give this one another try. Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation. We need three councillors. Right now we have councillor Camden and councillor Shell. Can I have another volunteer, please? So if no one puts their name forward, oh, did you just raise your hand, councillor Allen? Were you scratching your nose or did you actually put your hand up? So just so everyone understands, if no one puts their name forward, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to defer and then we'll deal with this in two weeks. So it's not going to go away. Do I have a name? Councillor Shell, did you have a comment?
Just if anyone needs to know what we do, the meetings are Mondays, once a month, 1:30. They're usually an hour and a half. And there's a lot of stuff happening right now. It's an important, important portfolio. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so what we will do then is we will separate KECO. Councillor Holland? Thank you very much. Okay, so what we will do is we will call the vote. So I'm going to ask for a mover and a second for all of the committee appointments except for KECO. We will separate that. Councillor George?
Just speaking with councillor Holland, I offered to do the Rural-Urban Liaison with councillor Allen, and she agreed to withdraw her name, if you'd like to switch us.
Okay. Okay, so just so everyone's clear then, so the Rural-Urban Liaison Advisory Committee will now be councillor Allen and councillor George. Okay, so can I have a, can I have a mover and a second, please, to ratify all of the appointments? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by deputy mayor Bohm. This is everything except for KECO. Please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries. So now for the KECO appointments, can I have a mover and a second, please? Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Stroud. Whereas technology companies and automobile companies are working towards the self-driving car, and whereas connected CB and autonomous AV vehicles are projected to begin to appear on the market in the next five to 10 years, and whereas Kingston seeks to be a smart 21st century city with a vision towards sustainable prosperity and embracing innovation, whereas the Kingston Transportation Master Plan considers our community's mobility needs over a 20-year horizon, and whereas the Ontario Good Roads Association has organized the Municipal Alliance for Connected and Autonomous Vehicles in Ontario, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to respond to an open invitation to join Mac Avou with the intent of collaborating with other Ontario municipalities in the research, testing, policy, and infrastructure development that will be necessary to support CB and AV, and that recommendations to repair our community for the use of connected and autonomous vehicles be included in future updates to the Kingston Transportation Master Plan. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you, I want to thank staff for their recommendations on how we might structure some parts of this motion to make sure that we're part of the larger conversation, because I had originally mostly focused it on our transportation master plan and making sure that we were prepared. But if we're part of this larger network through Ontario Good Roads, I think that will go a long way for making sure we're informed and included as part of that. We've had lots of people, especially on, if you use social media, there's certainly lots of people who think that Elon Musk and that connected vehicles and that electric vehicles are the future. And it's pretty obvious that this kind of thing is coming our way. And I thought it might be important that we provide direction to ensure that in our next update to the Transportation Master Plan, which is possibly starting early next year, if not in early 2018, that this be part of that so that we don't lose out and that we're prepared for when these vehicles hit the road and start coming into our city. And we already have roads and transportation systems that are prepared for them. I think it's just very clear as part of a smart city that we have the technology and infrastructure in place to adapt to the new vehicles that we're going to see on our roads and in our rights of way. So that's essentially why we're bringing this forward. And I reached out to councillor Stroud, who kindly seconded this, and I think it's just obvious that we need to consider this going forward.
Thank you, councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you councillor Allen for having the foresight to think of this and to get out in front of the issue. To the skeptics that might not think that this is going to be reality, I would guess five to 10 years might actually be a conservative estimate. When things change in transportation or technology, they change quickly. It was a little over 100 years ago when Henry Ford discovered how to mass produce the horseless carriage. At that time, the widespread notion was, oh, that'll never catch on, those are just gadgets for the rich. That's what, exactly what folks are saying right now about connected vehicles and autonomous vehicles, about the Tesla Corporation. But it's, it's clear if you look at the, if you, if you look at the progression of the technology and how fast it's catching on, that it will be a reality very soon. So the least we can do is be prepared policy-wise and to join with other municipalities, so that's a great addition, that first clause. So I encourage everyone to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, I'd just like to echo what councillor Stroud and councillor Allen have both said. In Ottawa, they've just brought this forward to their council as well, and they're writing a white paper on this. And I think Kingston, as we are a smart city, we should follow in suit with this as autonomous vehicles. AVs have a huge impact in the city. AVs have a huge impact in the city, and it could be in our city as well, and it would be great if we could jump on top of this and get it forward as well. So I agree, and I think this is a great motion. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay, so we will call the vote on new motion number one. And that carries. Number two, moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas council is committed to open government and established fostering open government as one of our strategic priorities, and whereas to meet this council, priority staff are working on the creation of a public engagement framework, and whereas council wants to ensure that members of the public, city staff, and city council members can share information within a respectful and safe environment for all, therefore be it resolved that council directs staff to include a set of expectations and guidelines of participation for staff, members of the public, and members of council, and that staff be directed to review and update the council procedural bylaw to ensure that the rules that govern order and the proceedings of council and its committees provide for an open and respectful environment for members of the public, city staff, and city council members, and that staff include a formal definition of open government and transparency within the public engagement framework that will be reported back in Q1 of 2017. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. This has been sort of growing over time as I thought of open government transparent and accountable, that we want to engage and empower the community, but we haven't actually discussed how that's going to happen and what the framework is. Some of the things that I've noticed is, does open government mean unlimited staff and counselor time? Does it mean that when you speak in public, you have unlimited time? Because we are encouraging people to participate more and more, does that mean, as they say, more and more unlimited ability to speak? I'm also finding that emotions are running high at times. We are dealing with some extremely contentious issues at times, and it is very important that we remember civility and respect in the way we deal with each other. So I've asked staff to... This is where the resolve clauses come in. Expectations and guidelines for participation of staff, members of the public, members of council. Respecting each other, respecting our professional designations if we have them, civility. Update the procedural bylaw. There are probably areas that we actually need to have bylaws to limit the length of time that people speak, just to keep some control. The more we ask people to speak, the more we have people speaking, and we really need to be able to direct in a respectful way how long we expect someone to talk, plus send in emails and written submissions. I also, as we've discussed tonight, the education component has come up, and I think that's becoming more and more important. As technology gets more complicated for some, and as we are encouraging more and more people to go on the website, to delve into the technology that we are making available through technology, we need to help the public be able to do it. And that can lead to frustration, and again, there we go back with the idea that we need to treat each other with civility. So this is why I brought forward this motion, so that we can just add these more concrete expectations of each other in how we move forward with what we hope to be a much more open and transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Just a quick question for clarity. Would this, and this is probably a question to the clerk, would this motion as it's now presented, it talks about council, but it would also apply to committee? Or would we need to do some kind of tweaking of the committee bylaw?
We don't anticipate having to do any tweaking of the committee bylaw at this point. The council procedural bylaw is not only for council, but it's committees as well. It follows pretty much the same procedures.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. These are questions, but maybe comments. I'll do it as a question, so... Okay, so would the expectation be, I guess, would staff's expectation be that something that these, this framework be presented at the beginning of each meeting? Or how is it that we alert the public that there are expectations?
So, I mean, this is a motion asking staff to do this, so my expectation is that that would, this would be reported back in the public engagement framework. Are there comments from staff on this? Commissioner Hurdle?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I will comment on the public engagement framework only because I think the portion in regards to committee and council would function through the chair and the clerk's support as well. But I think in terms of the public engagement framework, that would be the responsibility of whoever is leading that public meeting, to make sure that the information is clear upfront to the public in terms of the expectations. So again, if we want to encourage as many people, for example, to speak as possible, it's obvious that we can't have somebody taking half the time. If we only have one person or two people that are able to speak, then we're really missing the point in terms of engaging as many people as possible. So that would be something that I would anticipate would be led by, if it's, you know, a director or city staff or a combination of, would be done by people leading the meeting.
Mr. Clerk?
So with respect to the other part of the recommendation dealing with updating the procedural bylaw, it would be our expectation that we would have to continue to educate the public, staff, and council. So the idea of having something at the beginning of the meetings, once we come back with a report, is something that we'll definitely look into, to set the stage for how we're going to have our meetings in the future.
Counselor Stroud?
I'll stand up, why not? I'm getting sore sitting there. This chair is, for some reason, tilted, and anyways. Okay, I'm going to just tell a story of a week ago. So I had a public meeting at Town Hall that we organized in my district, and it was organized by community volunteers, and I volunteered to be the moderator of the public meeting. And Commissioner Hurdle was there with Director Agnew as well, and other members of staff, and almost 200 people there. And I told everyone that it was only two minutes per speaker at the beginning. I told them that we needed to be respectful and all that, similar to this introduction that Counselor Holland was just asking about that we would have to give. And it still resulted in an exercise of certain individuals not giving up the mic, coming back to the mic two and three times, speaking for more than double the amount of time that they were asked to speak, even after being reminded several times by myself, to the point where I actually... Was the consensus amongst the organizers that I should not have been, as the counselor, I should not have been the moderator because it was too emotionally charged a situation? And all we were talking about was bylaws, which you would think wouldn't be that emotional, but it was. So it was the subject of that petition I presented. Anyways, what I'm saying is that I really support this initiative, but it is going to be very tricky to implement because the public doesn't necessarily follow the rules that you tell them in a public meeting. And so it's sort of like the issue of bylaw enforcement. It's like you can write the bylaw, but if you don't enforce it, it doesn't really mean much. Or you can say no street parties, but if you don't enforce it, you still get street parties. So that's kind of what I'm saying here, is that I'm looking forward to this coming back from staff, and I hope that staff is aware that enforcement and very clear directives are going to be essential to this working. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Cannon?
Thank you. And through you, I'd like to thank Counselor Shell for bringing this forward. I think it's, I think it gives a reasonable expectation and a kind of minimum standard for us to go by. I know that through the meetings with the Memorial Center, things got very heated and at times kind of got a bit out of control. Same thing happened with KEDCO, and it'll certainly happened with different things related to the Capitol, where it's reasonable to be very passionate about things, but it's another thing to have kind of a minimum standard. And I think that if we have something we can hold our hat on, it'll be a little bit easier. Everybody may not abide by it, but it may be a little bit easier to do our job as counselors and to kind of keep a standard code of conduct, not just for us, but for everybody who's involved in the conversation. So I think it's a great motion.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, and I appreciate all the comments made by everyone thus far. I think, you know, one of the challenges of being a council and being an elected official is that we hear people probably at the point that they're most frustrated, and that they've actually come down to City Hall, and they've had to wait in line, and they've heard other people be angry or upset, and that's gotten their emotions also fired up. They may not be. There are some folks who are very logical and talk for quite a period of time as well. But I want to say, like, it's so important that whatever comes of this motion, that that ability for us to hear what people have to say isn't taken away. That ability for us to have open doors isn't removed. And based on some of our comments, we're like, we're a bit nervous about decorum and about civility. Sometimes that's difficult for people because they're very passionate. We have to find that right balance, and I think that that's what this motion is asking for, which is why I'm supporting it. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're continuing down the path towards opening our doors and listening more, and as much as possible. And I recognize also that that decorum that we seek to bring may make it easier or more accessible for other voices to be heard because they won't be intimidated by emotion or by language that sets them apart. And so I just want to caution some of the comments here to make sure that they're balanced with the fact that really our ultimate goal is to make sure we hear more and we hear more effectively. And hopefully, we can set some standards that the community can buy into and support through this process.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I just want to touch on some things that I heard from Counselor Stroud and Counselor Allen. And in some of my experiences, what can sometimes happen is with 50 people in a room, you do end up with a very loud voice, and sometimes what happens is without these rules in place is that person can take over the conversation, and the risk there is that you lose out from hearing from sometimes the other 49 people. And I think that this motion should help clear that up to basically say, I can think of personal experiences where, you know, essentially, if one person or a few people are monopolizing the time, it doesn't really aid the conversation because sometimes it's the same thing over and over again. So in this instance, I really hope this helps actually increase the engagement of some other people who maybe aren't as outspoken but have a lot to say. So with that in mind, I'll be supporting this as well. And well done, Counselor Shell.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, last four minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2016-28, held Tuesday, November 15, 2016, be confirmed.
Still one person to vote. And that carries. Some tabling of documents, some communications. Is there any other business? Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you. I have a letter that I sent to the mayor today that I'd like to read into the record, if I might. Dear Mayor Patterson and senior city staff, I wish to state emphatically and without reservation that recent statements I made regarding transparency and open government were not intended to impugn motive or to bring into question any staff member's integrity or professional ethics. I regret if anyone felt that this was not the case. Recent events have led to some frustrations on my part regarding the stated council priority of transparency and open government. This has led to many Kingston citizens also feeling frustrated. I look forward to advancing policies that establish greater public engagement and consultation with greater transparency. I understand that staff members are preparing a report to address these concerns. I look forward to receiving it. I'll be pleased to meet and speak to any member of staff who may wish to seek clarification of my comments or who wish to speak to me regarding this very important initiative. Sincerely, me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, last... Yes, Adam Deputy Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mayor Patterson. I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind those members of council who've been appointed to administer policies committee, you have a meeting tomorrow night.
Congratulations. Okay, so with that, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws, please.
We will start with bylaw number six. Counselor Cannon, you're excluded from this vote. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Allen, that bylaw six be given its first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaw six be given its third reading. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws three through five and seven be given first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws one through five and seven be given third reading.
Still one person to vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Cannon. Please vote. Please vote. And we're adjourned. Thank you very much.